On YouTube right now.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and call the meeting to order and remind everybody this is our first time trying YouTube. Trying to make sure that it's working prior to July first meeting that we'll have. So ask everybody to stand and Dennis will leave us a word of prayer and I'll leave some pledge allegiance.
Parents and family, Father, thank you Lord Jesus for this day and the beautiful weather you showed upon us. Father, we just pray for wisdom, Lord, that you help us use the monies that are available to help our community, to keep it up and to keep us safe. Father, we just pray that you help us with any decisions we need to make tonight and let it be united in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the memory where it stands, one nation under God, hand of Israel, liberty and justice for all.
Bring up the meeting a little bit, Jeremiah will be a little bit late, he had an incident he had to take care of, so he'll be a few minutes late. Like I said, we're trying out our YouTube online, so hopefully this will work out and if we need to make any corrections, we can get that done prior to the next meeting, so. First thing on our agenda is call for the bid listings for the surplus property that we had advertised on the heating and cooling. I think you did not receive, did you receive any bids?
I've got a report that both of the applicants that I had was going to bid on it. The nursing home for the boilers, they purchased brand new and informed me that were way too much for the used units because for eight thousand dollars more, they bought the exact same models and everything for two units. So we're gonna have to readdress that if we're gonna set it back up for sale and lower the cost if we plan on selling. The other, the chiller and the other thing, the company in Indianapolis backed out as well. They said it's going to cost them more to kind of get it than what they thought it was worth. They thought they could get it for like five hundred dollars, but I'm positive we can get more on that and scrap if we scrap this. So I'm gonna say that we use John and current to either hook us up with a guy that will buy the freon, recycle it, or John will take it at no charge so that we can dismantle it to for scrap. On the boilers, I talked to Eric, he's gonna be talking to a couple, four or five people since we're willing to come down on it and see if he can, but he also told me to run it by you. He said that it would be ideal for a farm that heats concrete that have heated floors. He said these cassette units are real good for that if you knew anybody. So that, he said maybe you need to advertise it in a different manner, not only commercial, but for farm use the next time we run the advertisement in the paper.
Try to sell separately, is that alright?
He's, yeah, I would say because, you know, if we could get, obviously they got it for fifty-eight thousand and Herb Mechanical does get a hundred and some thousand when they sell them to us, but a lesser heating and air company got them and she was willing to show me the bid and it came in at fifty-eight something with a ten-year warranty, but they're a smaller company that do a heating and air, so their margins aren't as high, I guess, or their profits on it. So when we bought them, we paid full fare for it, but unfortunately we're stuck in it. They're no good to nobody sitting in there, just sitting there not being used, so. I don't know, I'd like to throw out a number maybe of ten thousand apiece.
So do you, I guess, do you want to stand by right now and see, wait a month and see if Eric can get a hold of some other companies?
We can do that, we can do that.
You want to move forward on getting rid of the freon or do you?
I would, because the unit's sitting in the backyard and stuff, I'd like to get it out of there as soon as possible to keep any kids from getting hurt or playing on it. So I'd like to scrap it out as quick as possible.
So are you making that as a motion?
I am making a motion, we scrapped the chiller and the, and the unit that came off of the roof, the sixty-ton air handler.
So, okay, and then you want to just hold on the boilers right now until we maybe get some more information on from another company?
I'd say we can postpone until next meeting.
How much were they listed for?
Fifty thousand for the bear.
Twenty-five thousand apiece? You want to cut it down to ten thousand?
Yeah.
Thank you, I have buyers for ten thousand.
Eric seems to think farmers would jump on it because it's, they're paying twenty-five thousand for new, so I don't know.
And you can wait a month, I mean, they're not, they're not outside, so.
We can, we can check it out and see what we can get out of it, play, play the field a little bit. But it's either that or there's, there were nothing basically, whatever, either that or just open up the bid to, whatever, open bids and just whatever it brings is what it brings.
Alright, so until the next, next meeting, let's give it time to see what we come up with and we'll go at that point and make other decisions then.
Alright, I got a motion from Dennis, second from Josh to go ahead and get rid of the chiller and the freon and all that, scrap the chiller and unit on the top of the roof.
Air handler.
And air handler, and then we'll just kind of wait till next meeting to see what our options are on the boiler system. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. Next thing bring up is May twenty twenty-two meeting minutes.
Twenty twenty-five?
I'm sorry, twenty twenty-five, sorry, look right at it. Connie emailed you these last week, hopefully everybody has a chance to review them. Anybody else, any questions or comments about them?
Making motion fix that, cut May twenty twenty-five minutes?
Josh made a motion to accept the May twenty twenty-five meeting minutes, do I have a second?
Second.
Jeremiah, second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion passed. Petitions or comments by citizens present, Mrs. Morgan? Yes, if you would please.
I was wondering what you found out about animals in town?
I emailed the new area plan director after last meeting on unsafe structures and also about the animals in city limits. He has not got back with me, but I did talk to him last week and he said that he was really wanting to make sure that he had all the correct information before he came because I guess he was saying that kind of matters on if it's in residential one, residential two, commercial, a little bit of everything else, and he didn't want to give us information that would not pertain to our community, so, and he wanted to make sure he gave us the right information, so. He didn't talk to me last week on it, he said he would like to get out and meet everybody at a meeting and, and maybe he'd have the information to provide for us too, so that's an update on that. He said he hadn't forgot about us, but he, he said, I'll be honest with you, he said, I want to make sure I'm giving you the right information before I come and say something and find out I gave you the wrong information.
Right, and real quick, I talked to you about the zoning. So, one, is everything residential except where there's a business? In that one area where the old candy factory?
The way I understand it is that owners have not come to ask for it to be changed, so it'll stay the way it is. And the one situation that you was talking about, the way he told me it will not happen because it's not zoned the right thing to allow that tower to go there, so. That's what he basically told me was until it changes the zoning, it will not happen because there's not enough distance to, for neighbors and everything else to be safe for their houses or buildings, et cetera, so.
Can we get a zoning map for the town specified? There's several things.
You just have to ask area plans, they, they got a copy of it, yeah. Yeah, I was gonna say, like I told Linda last meeting, that was probably accepted back in nineteen ninety-six when we joined the area plan. I don't think it's really ever changed, and I know that back then there were some areas that were more business. Now they're kind of residential or vice versa, so I mean, I don't know, we need to kind of look into that to see if we need to update that or change it in any way because there's a lot of areas that were, like I said, were houses or were businesses now have changed.
Yeah, I know one, your change from business to just plain residential.
We can't all be residential, one business, other people that's had more building coverage than their law, so they would have changed.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, I, like I said, and he didn't know how that one lot, because all them lots down there are business, like you said, except one lot, and he said, I don't know how that ever got changed, I mean, there's like fourteen lots down there and they're all business and that one lot centers the residential. He says, I have no idea how it got done, so.
Where's the house down there before?
This is like a candy factory, so.
We just not changed two places, Chatham County, even though they're surrounded by R1, there was like I three around those things, so we gave them an I one in the middle of all that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, people can come and request the change if they like, or, you know, I mean, it's basically up to the town or the area plan to recommend or not recommend, so. That's an update on that. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to claims for May of twenty twenty-five. Like I said, also Connie sent out, was it yesterday or the day before, the accounts payable voucher for May, so if you had opportunity to look at it. The total for May was, uh, thirty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-seven cents.
Thirty-seven, seventy-five oh seven? Is that correct?
Yeah, I feel that front cover sheet is stuck.
Thirty-seven, seventy-seven?
Yeah.
I got one question, what's the house service for Marshall Johnson?
He said it was a call service for Marshall, seventy-eight, six-three.
That's his cell phone, the panel phone.
His hotspot for his, I, or his laptop and his, his car and his cell phone.
System went showing the reflection and the electric bill going down to three.
Yeah, that will be through this, this may, that was a June move.
I'm, everybody else is open, I'll make a motion to approve this.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Josh to approve claims for May twenty twenty-five, a second by Dennis Kendall. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion passed. Alright, we'll move on to department ahead, Josh, you got anything to do this with on area plan?
Yeah, we hired a part-time clerk, I guess it's hiring freeze, can't hire any full-time employees. We hired a part-time clerk. Nolan Baker, isn't it? Starts six sixteen. I live in Mabre, basically, it was a very simple meeting, and we're gonna change, we send out certified mail for people who don't do things or fees or checkups, everything. Costs us like ten dollars and forty-three cents each time. Sixty-six point some percent of those were a no, no count, no callback, no nothing. So we're just gonna switch it to a certificate of mail, cut down two dollars, ninety-three cents. We'll have a receipt proving that it's paid, no, we spend it to for notices for changes and stuff. Save us five, six hundred bucks a month. Other than that, it's a pretty simple deal.
Uh, like I said, I did the new lady that does the unsafe structures, I guess she was out a couple weeks ago. Phil Clowder, I was gonna say, talked to her a little bit, and she's been looking on some of them that we requested to check on, so.
Did they, did she go through and put the sign on something like that, said danger?
Yeah, I think so, yes, I believe so, she did that that day.
She took some pictures.
Yeah, so I know she's working on that, so, like I said, I haven't met her yet, so I really can't say anymore about that, so. Moving on to fire department, Rick?
Giving fourteen fire runs and one ambulance assist.
And update you gentlemen on the last proposal about the adding two fire hydrants on Main Street. Jitter John Machine did make a nice donation to the fire department for that project and the elevator's gonna mention, so they're both giving twenty thousand dollars, so, I'll lap forty thousand dollars for that project, so. We talked at our meeting last night and looked at all the supplies ordered and get the, started on that so we can get it done before the paving project, so. Working on that, so. Uh, sewer department, Jeremiah?
Did you get to the last one?
Yeah, yeah, I don't think it's really acted up too much since then, kind of thing, so. Dennis, street department?
The main concern is the amount of money we're spending to keep the event center open. It's costing me anywhere from five to seven hours each time we rent that place out to have Phil clean it. And it's worse when it rains, so I'm under the opinion it's gotta be moisture coming up through the concrete and I don't think, no matter what we do on top, it's gonna stop it unless we pull the floor up and reseal it and do something, I don't know, clean those tiles and put them back down with a different glue that's not water soluble or what, but I cannot get Keeley to call back or answer and Phil tried himself, I texted him and talked to him in person at Lowell's one day and he just kind of says, I don't know what the next step is, he said, I don't know what to do. So that's just Phil, word of mouth from Phil and what he said, so. I have not been able to directly talk to Keeley himself to get that, but we gotta do something if we're gonna keep renting it because it's, it's coming cost, it's not cost efficient for us to rent it for seventy-five hours when it's costing me sixteen, eighteen bucks an hour to clean it for seven hours.
Yeah, we just need a new floor, nice, like, rip it up, new wood, a little bit of new wood.
Yeah, but, I mean, we got ten grand in that floor.
No warranty, no?
Well, we thought we had, but.
So you want to try, try to get a hold of them again, or do you want me to try? I mean, I don't have a problem with trying to get a hold of them.
You can try and see what he tells you, or if he'll, he'll answer your blue. Mine just goes basically to voicemail, it's like he, that, that type of voicemail's full or won't answer.
Probably be stopped, gonna be out that way in a moment, so, see if I can talk to him, but if not, I guess we'll either talk to our town attorney, see what his recommendation is, and I guess if we had to, we might talk to another company, have them come and look at it, see what they recommend. They might have a solution, so, I'm like, I'm, I agree with you one hundred percent, it is that, you know, we're not, we're going backwards instead of forward, so.
But it's a good thing for the town, everybody's really liking that room.
Oh, yeah.
And now that we got the heat and stuff and air in there that's perfect, so it ain't coming from moisture from, I mean, that's a dry atmosphere that we're giving that, because we're, we're pulling moisture out of the room when we got the air on through the heat pump, so. It's not like hot water heat where you, you're in a moist environment. So it's gotta be coming up through the bottom, through the concrete, getting it, because after this last graduation, it was right after that rain and she called up saying, hey, look, I've tried everything, I'm mopping and stuff, but this floor is awful looking and I can't get it up, and Connie said, yeah, we know about it, don't worry about it, it's not your fault. We'll get it, we have to use a special chemical to get it up, so.
Okay.
How long has that been installed?
Not quite a year.
I'd say maybe a little over a year, it was maybe a year and a half, maybe.
Yeah, it's about a year and a half and we're not waiting through this year.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Because it was cold when he.
But didn't we do that before we did the gym?
No, no, we did the gym first.
Okay, okay.
We did the gym first, then we did that, because we liked the gym so well and it worked out so well. And the prep room is a little bit, but it didn't get the traffic, the prep room that the other room gets. The prep room we have a little bit of a problem with, but, you know, you can live with that one because it's not that much and you can clean it up, but that other room gets almost every crack, every tile all the way down through the brick.
So we think that it's used the wrong glue?
I don't, you know, I'm not the professional in that area, but to me, if water is, wants bringing it up and that glue is coming to the top, it has to be dissolving with water.
It's either that or he took the seal code off because he, like, I'll say, grounded it or buffed it or whatever and then we never had that problem before.
So he plastified it?
Not underneath the.
We don't know what's under the concrete, the way they board it.
But it's awful weird just because that's the only floor in the whole building that does that and that's the only floor that's been buffed like that. When he did the gym, he didn't buff it or ground it.
He used a chisel thing.
Right, but he didn't use what he did in there, so, I would say it's something that he did prepping it. And like Dennis said, it might just be a bad batch of glue that they got content, I don't know, but like I told Dennis, if he pulls it all up, you still gotta clean the back and you gotta clean the floor to get it to, whether, whatever you do.
And then you gotta reseal it, because you gotta get it off the floor.
It's only today, again, discussion with him in which he admitted that he used wrong glue, and that's what.
Yeah, but it's awful funny because we've met with him three times and he hasn't ever said that, he just says it's something not right. I understand that, I'm not the professional, like Dennis said, I don't lay floor every day of my life, so, he needs to tell, or he should, I feel like he's saying he should done behind it, whether he has to get with his company that he purchased the glue from or whatever, I don't know, but that's not my job.
How long have we been prepping about this?
Yeah, that's what I.
Well, he's got business interests, I'm sure of that.
We're sure of it, we've been talking about it for the last six, eight months now, so it's not like it just now happened.
Well, we, we gave him a chance, he said, he has done some stuff, he came in, I sealed it, it helped and we thought it was until it rained. Then it started coming right through it, so, we thought we want to live with it, it wasn't real bad, it was kind of like the prep room comes up here and there, but after that rain and the, the kid traffic and the traffic in that room, that floor was sticky. I mean, you could walk on it and stick, your shoes would stick to the floor. We just gotta follow through and do it, and then, um, and, I see, we got heating and air anywhere, yeah, I'll just wait until we get that, the heating and air, the old business. Under new business, Chet, there's a black car on East Eighth Street that's kind of, it's in the right-of-way part and it's got grass growing up in that, around the house, but can you tag that car? Because it's got a twenty-three point of, it's twenty-five, so. I, from hearsay, the person that has the house and the car and stuff, maybe incarcerated, but I don't know that to be a fact, but there's nobody there right now. So, and then, I guess, we have that house that, do we want to get Phil to mow these properties or?
Yeah, first county sent a letter to it.
Connie needs to send a letter to him.
Yes.
We have a.
We got like five days to respond or something.
One oh five E Sixth Street. There's tall grass, two oh seven, E Sixth Street, tall grass, and one oh nine, East Eighth Street, tall grass and an automobile without, with a illegal point. Or outdated weight.
Are these the same properties we discussed last month?
No, not all of them.
Some of them.
The McCowen, I don't know if they were on last month?
Yeah, they was, that one on Eighth Street was, I think the other one, the only one wasn't, the two of seven.
The Habitat House.
They're about, you all right, but sending letters out, asking if your yard's mowed, if not, then we'll do it.
Yes, yes, true.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Uh, please, Chet?
I don't have anything, I just want to give out the phone number to begin, so, you know, people could call in with their complaints and stuff. Cell phone number is seven six five, six six zero, one eight four zero, that's the Matthew's Police Department's cell phone number. And our landline number is seven six five, nine nine seven, one five five four. And if you have any complaints or reports that need to be done, please call me anytime, if I'm off work, I'll answer and then I can come in and do it the next day or we'll make some kind of arrangement for the sheriff department or just surround them agencies to take care of the issue. Lot of emergency, call nine, call nine one one, good job, Paul.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, after the last meeting, when you said that, I got, I thought, I want people to realize that, you know, if you got an emergency, just call nine one one, somebody will be here, might be thirty minutes, but they'll be here. So, uh, the only thing I was gonna say was, we did get Chet's car all done from the accident that was involved. We got the strike kit on and all that, so that's all completed, so. We had all the recalls on the horn, he's done, just got him up, up with it. Well, it's a seatbelt, it's something about the seatbelt fastener. Okay. Probably, but I haven't had it.
All day, see, computer, everything.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and then I gave the check to the gentleman that put the strike kit on, he got that the next day, so, that's all taken care of. Alright, thank you.
Uh, clerk?
Yes, I have a few things, I'll send these down. I have invoices for outdoor concepts, any amount of one twenty-nine ninety-five for motor and rear parts. Keystone billing is due for the next year. Usually we have town pay half and utility pay half, that is six thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Um, usually we have town pay half and utility pay half, that is six thousand six hundred fifty-seven dollars. And then we have two, the whites repair, one for the police vehicle and one for a mower battery for this.
Are you wanting to pay these right now, is that why you want these?
Yes.
Did you, or, uh, on the course again bill? I know, but was it on this claim?
Yeah, it will be in the jury claims.
It'll be in the jury, okay, alright.
Keystone's expensive, I'm telling you.
Uh.
I said that Keystone's expensive.
That's the way we did way with them for a few years because of the expense.
What they do?
They do all of our billing for our sewer and all of our budget, uh, that's basically the only thing the state kinda accepts. Correct me if I'm wrong, Connie, on that, um, the way I understand, that's pretty much the only software the state will accept. To do budgeting and everything else, you go through gateway, but it's.
It's our check program to pay all of our bills, it's all for invoicing for the utilities, um. I mean, it takes care of everything, all of our, all of our bill payment, um, sewer, everything, and also with that. Anything from, any help through the call desk is free, like they call me back, they can get on TV or with me, help me. Which we don't have to pay that huge amounts of hourly help to have them come on site. So we do save a lot of money there just through the help desk and stuff.
It's a necessary, what's like insurance?
Pretty much, yes, yes, you're correct there on that, cause like I said.
Every town.
I would say about every town around, I don't know many other company that anybody else uses it, suppose. That's where our checks come from, well, they come from voice, but. They're the same.
Right, Keystone voices, make a motion.
Okay.
Motion by Josh, second by Rick to pay the. Oh, I'm sorry, Jeremiah, I'm sorry, motion made by Jeremiah, second by Rick to pay the bills that Connie just received. Uh, this today, all those in favor say aye.
Alright.
All those opposed, motion passed.
Um, I did, wanted to let you know that I filed eight sewer lanes on the thirtieth, um, for non-payment. Um, of four months or more, um, on the sewer bills. Uh, those have been already, we've already gotten the file stamped copies back on those. I'm getting ready to do a second round of sending out letters for the next group of people. Um. And the other thing I wanted to let you know is that we received a Form twenty-two certificate of tax distribution today. Um, our general property tax this year was ninety-two thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-six cents. Our license excise tax received was five thousand nine thirty-seven thirty-four.
Slow down, five thousand what?
Five thousand nine hundred thirty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. And then our CBIT, which is commercial vehicle excise tax, was two hundred and thirty dollars. Um, that was a total of ninety-nine thousand twenty-eight dollars and ten cents. But we had to pay our audit out of that, and that was nine thousand eighty dollars and fifty-six cents. So our, our net that we received today was eighty-nine thousand nine forty-seven fifty-four.
Forty-seven fifty-four. She's talking about when the state did the audit last year, the, was that for three years?
Five years, it was two thousand nineteen through twenty-three.
So, we, we already knew that, we were gonna get that reduced off our property tax. That way we see, so we were, I think we just discussed that before, so.
Okay, pre-budget is due June thirtieth in gateway. Um, I just got the information today, so I didn't have time to prepare anything for you guys to look at tonight. I have to have it in by the thirtieth, but since it's pre-budget, we can make any changes before. We advertise for the twenty-twenty-six budget, so I'm gonna be working on that, I have class every Wednesday for the next several weeks. Um, what I, my plan is to try to get the budget done sooner this year, so we don't have to worry about. If something would happen, not making that have to be thirty-first day, so we can have our. All of our dates in and stuff prior. And then I know, um, we had talked about the, the SL F R F, um, Department of Treasury kept sending us those emails.
Yes.
Um, I finally got a letter stating from them. That they did indeed receive all of our reports and they canceled any notices of being paid back. And that, that was, um, for the COVID money.
Basically, we kept getting emails saying that we hadn't needed proper documentation saying where we spent our money. Uh, we got two rounds of it, and some of you weren't on the board when we did that, uh, back in twenty nineteen was the first year. Twenty twenty-one or something was the second year, whatever, but, uh, you know, I contacted Connie a. Month ago or three, right after the last meeting, I'm like, are we sure that we got all that in, and she goes, yeah, I talked to the lady at the treasurer's office. She said, I don't know why they keep sending you that information and, uh, just making sure that we all, you know, were on the same page and so that's what. She was saying was she received a letter saying they got all the documentation, it's all right. What'd she tell me, we had to pay three hundred dollars back or something?
Two, like two hundred and maybe seven, eighty-seven, something like that.
So, and basically that was because we didn't spend it, and so, I mean, I think we handled two or three hundred dollars to. Pay back to the federal government if they gave us that much to make sure we did it right, so. That's what that was all about.
Okay, that's all we have.
Alright, um, all business, still talking about the trees in the right way, I did ask. Phil, when this gentleman was cutting a couple of residents in the, down the cemetery, if he could get a quote on. Cutting that old tree there on Main Street and then he had a couple there in the park that he, and I don't know if he did or didn't.
For coming back to my house, if you want me to follow up with that.
Yeah, I think he said there were two in the park down by the.
There's true, just, uh, oh, that's the one that the kids broke down and stuff and that, that needs to be cut down, kinda like a bush tree.
Uh, this is. These are trees, one of them's all hollow near that.
Okay.
But he was gonna see if they could surprise.
It's, I had a tree cut down near my street. And just to cut it, they don't have to haul nothing off or cut nothing up, just cut it and land the trunk. It was two hundred bucks. But Fountain paid twenty-four hundred bucks to have those three trees taken down and cut up.
I'd say we wanna cut up and save that, so we don't have to mess with it.
Okay.
You might check if you're about to have it, cause your trees.
Yep.
Uh, heating and cooling system update.
Okay, the unit finally arrived, it's up on the roof and it's got the gas hooked to it and the electric hooked to it. He's coming back tomorrow to hook up, start doing the ducting between the furnace and the building. And then he's gotta call his ins- uh, the insulator crew, like we had to have that other one insulated, so they got it insulated. And he's doing to do everything he can to have it, everything done by Friday, but it may run into next week. And he was wondering if, how long he would have to wait for the payment because he has to pay for that unit since. It's been sitting in Fort Wayne for almost a month. And he couldn't get it here because they delivered it instead of here. And I told him that I'd asked the board if they'd authorized me to okay it after I've inspected it, make sure everything's. Done right and it's running and working, then I could tell Connie to cut him the check next week sometime.
Did we pay half of it, round already or something?
Yeah, we paid us.
We're, we're on our, it was three tiers, we paid two tiers.
Paid two.
This is gonna be the final.
My opinion is he gets paid the final one when he's completely finished.
Yeah, it's gonna be completely finished, yeah.
Then yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Completely finished, he's done and done.
One, yeah.
I was gonna say, that's the way the contract read.
Right, yeah.
So, I really, let's see if I had. Possibly get, did I say that's the way the contract read, that it would be paid at the end of the contract, so. I would say if you're, once you inspect it, you think everything's fine, then Connie can cut the check, so.
Okay.
That's the way the agreement was, so.
So with a hundred percent done, and uh, I need coming back to do this and next to that.
No, it'll be done, I won't, I won't go pay it.
Any motion for that?
No, because it was already.
In contract.
Yeah, it was already in contract, we were in that, that motion, so. Anything else on that?
Uh, that's it, I mean, that and already updated you on the.
Right.
Boiler and that chillers.
Uh, we'll bring up, don't forget about the inventory, if you get a free time to try and get that up to date. Sewer ordinance, we need to kinda still look at that. And the handbook, I haven't really had a chance to look at it. Done discuss the flooring in the bedroom. And, uh, did you happen to get hold of that guy on the insurance?
I haven't talked to him.
Well, I'll try, I'll call him and see maybe you can kinda start working on stuff and what information.
He'll probably need copies of ours to compare it.
Right, yeah, I was gonna say, I'll see what he needs to try and give us a renewal price, so. New business, Josh, you have any new business?
Uh, yeah, I forgot last couple of months, but April through November, I keep an extra trash can after every, I pay for.
Oh, definitely.
Can we like post on the town side or something to please use it? I go down there to empty it, you know, every week and I still have to pick up trash everywhere, all down the ramp, all over the yard, the driveway. See me picking some up last night. Is there a way to advertise to ask people to help pick up trash?
Add it to the website, if you're gonna use our facilities down at the Lions Park and the Pope Ramp. Please be courteous, we're supplying a trash can.
Mine.
Yeah.
Facebook too.
Yeah.
I'm not bad for it, but just use me. Yep.
Okay. Rick?
Mm-hmm, I'm good.
Jeremiah? Do you have anything else?
Nope. Is, uh, we heard any projection on the roads?
Uh, no, I talked to him the other day, I would say it's probably gonna be July or August.
Okay.
I was gonna talk to him, make sure that he realizes when the bridge festival is, so either do it before or after.
Or after, yeah.
I just wanna make sure that he don't forget that, so.
The melanes, are we gonna keep any of those or can we, or? Uh, cause I have, uh, Yuri Dilly said even if he had to pay, he wants at least five or six more loads out there. And I wanna give about three loads.
I would say that's probably, we'll have to talk to him and see what their contract agreement is with them.
Rather than said that, oh, forever who's home, man?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Whether they gotta take it back to their plan or what.
Okay.
Can we use, can we use those in the alleys, like?
No.
Kind of packs and uh.
It doesn't work, no.
It's hard to grab, you can't.
You can't, and when you do, it comes in clumps. Because it doesn't stick back together like it would if it was asphalt, but it does stick together to make puddles. Yeah, make it way worse than gravel.
Yeah. Yeah, I was gonna say, once it sticks back together, you're not gonna move it without an asking parent. That's the only thing that's bad about it is, once you get it there, you better make sure it's where you want it.
I mean, there's ways people have recycled, used it, but it's not all good, but you put wet tire on it and you. On a good hot day and use a steamroller to roll down, but it is still, it cracks and falls out, it's just too brutal.
Anything else? Um, like I said, uh, we're working on the YouTube and, uh, I guess if, uh, at the next meeting. We have to make changes, we will, so.
Is this advertised online?
It's on the town website, and, and I put it on positive there.
And just to let you know, our, our town attorney, he even on me a couple of weeks ago, just wanted to make sure that. We were doing this and I'm like, yes, we're already working with the gentleman and he's getting it all set up, we're all, we'll be ready for July first, so. That's good to know, so.
What about the locks and so?
Yeah, so we have all the equipment here, um, and I am beginning to work on getting all that set.
The locks and the cameras?
Yeah, so we have, we have the locks, we have the cameras and everything, it all arrived. Um, so I'm just gonna be here as often as possible to get that done as soon as possible. And I'm gonna be getting all of Greg to work with him, um, on some of the network stuff, uh, but that's pretty much just me. Just going after it, so, um, hopefully the goal is by beginning of next week, it's, it's complete, so.
By next meeting anyway.
Yeah, so, it's, yeah, this is, so I'm just gonna hit the ground running now that we have everything in place, so.
Have you got one more thing, the old, where the old Garfield used to sit down by the river?
The old one?
Old Garfield, yes. It's like a concrete pad, I have a bicycle rack at the house, it's only maybe six foot wide, holds maybe. Four or five boxes on the side, it's possible to melt that down there somehow, can I drill a hole through it and melt to it, or?
My perspective, you know, I'm fine with that, I mean, we was one of the first installed it there from Garfield, but. Then with the log, it ended, it kinda ripped it off, we decided to move it somewhere else, so I don't have a problem with it.
Maybe just throw in a couple of wax rooms.
Right, yeah.
Anything that makes it look better or have?
Yeah, people park somewhere, started just laying it down, you know, gives them a spot. And what about at the bridge, uh, two, three years ago, I dug out some of the barberry bushes. Now there's a sidewalk and you walk up and got the fence around, it was all them prickly barberry bushes. Well, I dug them up, I replaced them with some eucalyptus, there's another one right in the same area that just overgrown now. Can I cut it up and replace it?
Don't cost nothing, I'll do it, but it's not ours, so.
Is the highway department, is that correct?
Uh, I think it's actually that people that own that. Property down there, they just let them use it. The ones that came and we vacated their alley.
I, I stuck with the historical society the last time, got approved on it, you know.
When I go there.
They're not, they're not in existence anymore.
Yeah, I know, so that's why, yeah. It's just hope Kenny came, walked down the sidewalk.
I was told the, the Armstrong and Spence and somebody else took it.
I got all the books from Ron Dusso.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I got all the books from Ron Dusso, so.
Oh.
I'd say just do that.
I'll replace it some.
Just do it. You're making it better.
I know. Surely no one will complain. Over that.
That's what I did, I moved the yard up on Main Street, the guy finally got ahold of me, he's like, thank me, it was like, I just didn't want to look back, so. He said, yeah, he let it tear out, I've got his name and number and everything, so worked out good for everybody, so. He said, Mr. Justin Houston Mo, like.
Right.
Before he passed away, so, and he, and he, uh, didn't know who was, who to get to do it, so I said, I'll.
There you go.
I would have planned it well, but I was told that somebody else was gonna start doing it. Last year, and they planned it last year, they didn't mention it.
Somebody was supposed to jack it up.
Yeah, so I might be able to get supplies.
That's Lions Park, you know?
Yeah.
That's Lions.
I'm moved.
Family that was gonna.
Yeah.
Do something with it.
Uh, yeah, I was in contact with them too, and it's like, like, they act like they never even mentioned it to me and I'm like, well.
I'll get some more flowers, okay?
Did you find out any more about what he was wanting to do with the military stuff?
I'm gonna get on that, since I'm retired, I'm gonna get on that again.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn it, so. Jeremiah, you made it, Josh, second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.